This conference will now be recorded.
Are we ready? Good morning, Neil. Please stand for the page.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands my nation in your direction. To this call, with the intention of justice.
I brought our guard there. Can we call the row please?
Vice Chair Carrie.
President.
Member Hennigan.
Here.
Member Hutchins.
Here.
Chair Marsh.
Here.
Let the record show Member Kaczynski is absent with notice.
I'll open it for any public comment. Seeing none, we move on. Requested approval minutes last month unless there are any clarifications.
I have one item there. It's on page three, towards the middle, paragraph beginning, "Member Kaczynski." And then it said, "Member Hutchins gave a brief personal history of where flat roofs when banned." And I believe it would, my intention was, "Member Hutchins gave a brief personal recollection of why flat roofs were banned."
Any other comments? Motion accepted.
Second.
One in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I remind everybody this is a flat side judicial procedure. Do you have to read it?
You want me to read it for you?
Please.
At this time, any expert in communication should be given the consent by identifying the subject of the communication and identify the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place or any correspondence provided to the town clerk and made a part of the public record. In addition, each member of the town of this standing and zoning may identify existence of any investigation or site visits he or she has conducted or any expert opinion received and disclose any conflicts of interest in this matter as regards to 6470. If you didn't have any expertise in communication, you can just say no into the record.
No. I did receive some communications and I responded by email to an applicant on 6470 North Ocean. No communication, I mean contact. Perfect. None. Okay.
Then proceed on to hearing on this matter. Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record on whether or not you have been sworn in. Please speak directly into the microphone. Thank you. You need to just warn us.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
Okay.
I do.
Do you swear or affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Before we begin on this, I'd like the town attorney just to give you all a little update. Yeah, Mr. Chair, I may. Y'all may be aware, this property has a couple of issues regarding access and regarding its location, regarding some pending litigation that's going on in the town. We are working on the legal issues regarding access to the properties to the west and on the issue regarding ownership that may be in dispute to the rear of the property. We will be handling both of those issues legally through different documentations in order to protect the town. So I wanted to just bring this up to the board's attention to mention that there may be concerns that board members have regarding access and properties to the west, and we will be handling those from a legal perspective. So for purposes of today's discussion, I know Cory brought out the fact about access and things like that. We are working on that. They're not resolved for today. So if it, you know, pleases the board, this discussion could focus on the actual development and we'll from a legal perspective, address both those issues going forward.
Thanks for that clarification.
Thank you.
The applicant. Presentation.
Right to the applicant, Cory will introduce the project overall.
Sorry. Good morning, Chairboard members. Cory O'Gorman, Town Planner. This is the plan review for 6470 North Ocean Boulevard. The scope of work includes construction of a new two-story single-family home with five bedrooms, a den, six and a half bathrooms, including a cabana, swimming pool and spa. The project has met all of the zoning requirements of the town of Ocean Ridge and recommend approval contingent upon resolving the access issue that's outlined in the report as well as was discussed by the town attorney. And I'm here to answer any questions if I can.
Thank you. Good morning, Durant Guy, Building Official. With respect to the property just introduced, the proposal, it has been reviewed by the building department for minimum compliance with the Florida Building Code and at the stage of development that has been introduced there are no objections with regards to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. Tara?
The project meets the town of Ocean Ridge drainage requirements with minor comments to be addressed at the building for you.
Thank you. Okay. Does the applicant want to make a presentation to the commission?
Morning, I'm Mark Janszuski, and I am a real estate construction and development.
You speak up, please.
Yes, can you hear me okay? I'm Mark Janszuski, and I'm a real estate development contractor for 30 years in California and in Florida now for 10 years. And this project is a little gummy because, and actually I've asked Dr. Jeff Peter, who's right here, to help discuss it since it is backed up to conservation land and I brought also our project manager Fabio up to discuss the design. And our approach, our approach of the project has been to in advance learn about all of the input that might be necessary for a successful application. Doesn't have a flat roof, has a lot of privacy and, and to the point that we have some work done already. On Friday, we already got our septic permit from the health department. So I will now introduce Fabio to speak more about the project and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Fabio, and we are here to present, we already know the project. What we are presenting is a house of pretty much 6,000 per feet of AC and almost 9,000 feet total. Two-story, the description, you know, five bedrooms, six bathrooms, garages, living dining room, guest bedroom. At this moment, I think we are complying with all the requirements. Yeah, if we go to the floor plan. I don't know. It's difficult to explain because I did it and, but I'm really happy with the design. We are trying to achieve here, take advantage of the view of the ocean and the rear, the intrapostal, the weight, the pool is designed is to take the best view from the intrapostal. So it's a little twig, you know, over there facing the intrapostal and creating a big area for the pool deck. I have here, on the first floor, you see five-car garages, kitchen, the family room. On the bottom of the plan, you have an office then, guest room, and towards the pool, you will see a big deck or covered area with barbecue spa, hot tub, and some area for to look at the intrapostal also. I have rendering here. We have been working on making this really nice, but I don't think this is in your presentation, but I can put it here on this. I don't know if that is visible for you. This is the rear view of the pool. This area here is the living room, family room, which is 45 degrees. This is the area where we have the spa and barbecue area facing this way, the intrapostal. That is the only exit that we have for the intrapostal. The mangroves are hiding all the rest. And this is another view, you know, showing is obviously more clear, and that's why I'm bringing this rendering here of the look of this area. Here is the intrapostal. All that is going to be, this is the cover area for the barbecue and the spa. This is the family room, living room here, master on the second floor with balcony. That is pretty much all. Ignore if you have any questions.
Okay, no, that's fine. I'll just leave it. Rest of the board members, commission members to ask any questions. Is there any other presentation?
I may be sort of the elephant. My name is Jeff Peter, and I may be the elephant in the room at the moment regarding some of the issues that have gone on with this property. I'd like to try to maybe clarify some of the things that have been happening related to the access that you discussed earlier. This has been a very controversial situation with our little buddy in the back. It's been quite a challenge dealing with all that and the lawsuits that have gone on with the basically troll that lives in our backyard. The property that is for sale is, has been sold or is in the process of being sold with the understanding that it's a waterfront property at the moment as opposed to a deep-water access property because of the litigation that is happening because of Mr. Swaim. And as a result, the you can, we can legally build a dock and legally have access to the lagoon all the way to what he claims is his property line without any interference whatsoever. It'll be completely legal doing. The only time it becomes a problem at the moment, according to him, is if we cross what he claims is his water, I'm using air quotes there, which is in dispute and is ultimately most likely going to be shot down. So the, the whole idea of this being a deep-water access property eventually will probably happen. It's just a matter of working through this process with him. Now, there is a question about the access to the property. I don't know all of you, I've been fighting Bill Swaim since 2013, okay? I've spent six figures fighting him in court because I do not want development back into mangroves. I do not want to be the guy that turns over the key to the bulldozer that knocks down the rainforest. That to me is a very valuable piece of property back there, that mangrove forest. I own a small part of it and I intend to preserve it. The part of it that I own that is adjacent to this property is mostly held in conservation easement. And most of the property back in the mangroves that is owned by the county, which is a large portion of it, is also held in conservation easement. And there is really no reason to have any road access to any of that. There is walking access if necessary for inspections or whatever the county may want to do to the mangroves back there by parking in town hall's parking lot and walking over it. That's not a problem. So because of fact, there is already a conservation easement in place over that property, the conservation easement language specifically says in perpetuity running with the land, meaning that piece of property. So that means forever, in my view at least. Apparently there's, Mr. Swaim seems to think there's some wiggle room in that definition. I do not. There really is no reason to have access to the back property that I own or any of the other property back there in terms of an actual road, which is what he is attempting to put in, allegedly alleges to be put in. We've discovered in deposition with him last week that he has never built anything. He has litigation going on with every single one of his LLCs. He has something like 30 different LLCs, and they all just litigate. He is in the business of extortion. That's what he does. That is his official business model. So we are in the process of fighting that. There are some questions about the submerged property back there that he claims he owns and he quit claimed. It is believed now through part of the deposition that some of that property was actually donated by the prior owners, Ocean Ridge Development Corporation, to the county, and it wasn't even theirs to sell to him and quit claiming. So there's a lot of things happening here, a lot of moving parts. I know it's been very confusing. I do not want to have the commission or the board here of the opinion that I have intentions to do development back on that property. Technically, because of a plat that was done before, that predates me, the lot immediately behind this one is labeled tract A future development. I have no idea why it says future development. There is no intention to develop it, and as I said, it is held in conservation easement. I have also offered to place a restrictive covenant over that in addition to the conservation easement to help reinforce it if it helps make the situation better, just essentially to prove that it is our intention to preserve that. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Mr. Chair, I may.
Just gonna, yeah, thanks.
I appreciate your comments. We are handling it from a legal standpoint. What he spoke of is not really a decision.
Okay.
Thank you.
One clarification. You're the owner of the property currently, right?
I am. So, and it is under contract.
Thank you. All right. You're right, so all you heard?
Sorry.
Okay. Let's move on to the review of the submission here. I'll open it to anybody that wants to comment or...
There's more of them.
I don't think there is. If you want to.
I have a question on Plan A1. You had it on the screen earlier. It's probably something that's obvious and I'm just missing it. There's a blue dotted line across there that bisects the pool, goes through the kitchen. What's that?
The blue line that belongs, that is the civil plan. It comes from the civil engineer, and that is some kind of information about like easement or, I'm not completely aware of that, but that is coming from the civil plan.
The 75-foot, 75-foot minimum setback from the annual flood.
No, is the flood annual flood.
It's what?
Annual flood.
What? 75-foot setback. Thank you.
We incorporated that in our plan because that was one of the requirements to have septic tank and all this civil information, you know, in the site plan.
Thank you. I have no additional questions.
And that doesn't create any problems in the construction process or concern that it might get wet?
Yeah, there, there is the risk, and that's why we have to set up the house at certain elevation to avoid, you know, any risk. So it should be higher than that. The house is going to be set up, painted, NADV, so it's going to be above that point.
If I can clarify too, as Fabio explains, as Fabio explains, it's the 75-foot setback that the civil engineer had provided in which, or beyond which, the septic would be, would need to take place so that there's a good distance there, buffer between the water and my end. And incidentally, once again, the septic permit from the health department is approved and I picked it up Friday to answer the question.
Yes. Yep. Fabio.
Yeah.
I noticed the project architect was Jim Britt.
Yeah.
Is he still practicing?
Yeah.
Must be awfully old. I mean, 40 years ago.
Yeah, I don't know how you grow. I've been in business for a while.
So you created these drawings?
Yeah.
I had some concerns earlier on, which staff responded to. I mean, you have a five-car garage, which seems abnormally high. I don't know. And let me back up. Is this a speculative house?
Excuse me?
Is this a speculative house?
For me, and I haven't decided if it's a sale or I've got to move in yet, but no, it's a moment for me.
Okay. I don't know. You know, five, five-car garage is a pretty abnormal.
Large.
Large number of cars. Because I did contact staff about coverages, and I think they convinced me that we are, you're complying. I guess.
Excuse me, yeah, but that is, I got the information from Mark, what he was looking for. So we just put it on the plan that he wants.
Okay, no, that's a program requirement.
It is a program requirement.
I'm just a little concerned on the aesthetics of it. It's a large house. I mean, the plan is, is a, you know, very nice plan. But, you know, the scale of this house is pretty imposing. You have 12-foot ceilings, two feet of structure on the second floor, and you have a height which complies. But again, if you look, can I ask staff to just go to the elevations? Like A5 would be fine. It seems to have, you know, extraordinary high perimeter elevations in terms of these very long tall walls that have no interruption. Can you just lower it a little bit? Sorry. Thank you. And then punctuated by this window pattern, which honestly, I don't know what reference those windows have. I know it says it's contemporary, but contemporary with a metal roof, there's something really kind of
Actually.
disorganized here.
The idea with this house was creating a contemporary house with a flat roof, but here in the town, that is his concern, is not allowed to have flat roofs. So we are creating like an eclectic design, which is between contemporary design and going a little bit, you know, classical and trying to.
Be careful how you use those terms, please. You've gone. No, I'm just, I can see the problem now because you just said it. You started the contemporary house and now you put a metal roof on top of it. And I'm just saying it's inconsistent with what contemporary should be or could be. I just find it very unappealing, but that's just my personal, because of the scale and some of the penetration that you're proposing. Can you go through the colors for the rest of the commission? Your palette there, please? I'm almost curious. Mark, is it, what was the, you made a very strong effort to meet, tried to attempt to meet all the commissioners. Is there a reason for that or just?
Yeah, so thanks for asking. In, in my experience, as I mentioned, 30 years of building, you know, Florida, I've always invited and actually always have met with individual planning commissioners to explain. This maybe not as, this house isn't very complicated, but the last project I got approved was on Star Island with, there was pending litigation. Well, I guess this one's similar in a way, but we're not talking about that today. But it's just an offer on my part, and I realize here in this town, that's not typically done. It's fine. But I, I have been successful in the past explaining questions of style and background and setbacks, and this one's, does have some special circumstances. So it's only in the effort to be available, make these meetings shorter.
Okay, just Fabio, could you go through the colors?
The color, the penetration would be aluminum, aluminum frames, the roof, metal roof. We're using a stone on the specific area over there, you know, the garage. The stucco is a flat stucco, nothing with very soft colors, nothing out of the normal. The is would be, is presented on the renderings on wood. Landscape, very simple, in my opinion, materials, nothing that is going to catch the attention or is going to create a project that is going to be problematic for the city.
Okay. Any other comments from the commission?
What color is the glass? You mean the frame?
The glass glass?
Yes.
There's a little bronze, a little touch of bronze. It's not clear, but.
Not black.
Not. It could be a little, we haven't decided exactly that because we are still working many details, but it could be some kind of tinted, you know, blue, little touch of blue. Have you seen those, that color? Is bronze or tinted with blue?
I have a question for the developer.
Yes.
We're looking at the front elevation and it has very low landscaping along the sidewalk and facing A1A. This, this is unusual for A1A fronted homes. Is the expectation that they'll be fencing, high hedges? What, what do you think the finished product's really going to look like? Because I, I can't imagine an A1A home. It, it would be very unusual to leave an A1A home like that. So I'd like to have a sense of what it's going to really look like from the street. So I'd like to have a sense of what it's gonna really look like from the street.
Excellent question. When I met Dr. Jeff quite a while ago and learned, as he lives in the same circumstances now, that the landscaping buffers critical for the home's success. Motorcycles on Sunday morning and traffic and visually, and there's already a screen there that we plan to keep. Now, for the purposes of the rendering, we didn't go through and develop the landscape plans yet. That'll be our next step. Our plan would be to maximize with the neighbor and with, uh, Carla's been a big help too, to understand what, what would be the right thing for the home. But we definitely want privacy for a buffer on all three sides of just the, the street.
So we, we should expect from A1A side to see a hedge along there? Is that what?
A hedge, and, and incidentally, the home is, I think, thirty-one foot high. It's not to the maximum height that's allowed. It's lower. So yes, on maximum. Is all gonna be a gate? Is, is, do you expect to put a gate there at the driveways or? I don't have a plan for the gate at the moment, but just a good visual buffer.
So Mark, from the landscaping plan you submitted with this, you're gonna revise that some more afterwards?
Mr. Rick.
Yeah, Kerry.
Pointed to the rendering.
Okay.
I don't think the rendering has the benefit of that landscaping plan or any landscaping. It was really just done for the purposes of showing a house, so we, we need to develop that still. But good point, it needs to be. And if we had, if the rendering was, was property, we wouldn't see the house.
I think, oh, you're, I don't think you say or indicate that, that existing hedge is gonna be kept on your landscape.
As far as I know, we intend to keep it, to keep as much of it as possible for the buffer between the street. We have a, we have a, it would be, obviously be a way for a car to go in and out, so that's the interruption for that.
Let me just note that if they are gonna maintain it, it should be put on the record.
Yeah, cause if you make any changes from what was viewed here today to the landscaping, you do have to come back before the board. So if you're gonna keep the hedges and it doesn't show it on the plan, then you might wanna voice it. So when they give their approval, they also will allow you to make that change, the landscaping plan to keep the hedges there.
Well, maybe I should be more clear. The instruction for the landscape architect's design was to provide a buffer very similar to what's there now. Whether or not the material, those plants remain, I, I didn't take the time to understand. This, this does do the job, Mr. Kerry, that you're suggesting, to buffer the house from the street, which is what we wanted to bring today to decide on.
Chairman Marsh asked about the five-car garage, the architect, and he deferred to you, saying that was part of the program. Part of the five-car garage is creating, you know, part of the house being really quite close to Ocean Boulevard. You know, what, why five-five-car garage? Is it four enough?
Four is enough, five's better. You know, the, the woman of the family loves the fifth one. I didn't really, but, for some reason, steps between a car and, and the kitchen are very important in her mind. I, I didn't wanna do that. I actually went back in because of that. But let me say too, Mr. Kerry and others, that this is, this lot's very unusual. It's, uh, I mean, it's twenty or twenty-one thousand feet. It's a very large lot, and the depth is two hundred feet. So where perhaps it may appear proportionally as close, it's really not. This is compared to other homes in the area. It's quite further back and won't have an impact on the environment.
Yeah, but when, but now that the wetlands, you're under a half an acre here. Yeah. Nineteen eighty-five, I think is what was put on the plan. So, I mean, it's not a small lot. It's not a massive lot.
Right.
It's, it's right next to town hall. It's gonna be high visibility. Yeah, I'm a little troubled by the five-car garage. I mean, I, I think it'd be nice to, to reduce that setback on the, on A1A by a garage bay. I don't, I don't wanna redesign your house. This has been an ongoing issue here of how, of trying to get us plans preliminary enough that a huge investment hasn't been made in, in the plans. But that, that would be my primary comment, and I can't tell you what the second floor impact on that would be. But it would sure be, be nice to have it set back a little more and have four garage, four-car garage is pretty big.
I, I respect that. There's probably other ways to do that. Your idea would kill this proposal and wouldn't be able to go forward today.
But we have to act on the proposal before us.
Sure. I guess if we, if we could live with a condition of approval, such as litigation or anything else that might need to be addressed, that the members could complain me, I would be pleased to accept that condition if it all quite works.
Just a quick question, and it's gonna be for Cory. Cory, based on the number of bedrooms, if they were to have a four-car garage, would they still be, would they still be zoning?
Yes.
Do you want to make a comment?
Yes. I have the seven-car garage.
And you use them?
I do. I'm not, I'm not particularly bothered by the number of garages, but I always tend to defer to the choice of the builder or the developer because you're putting up the money. It, I, I do, I do respect Mark and Rick for their comments, but this is the plan. Do we wanna shoot it down over a garage? I don't think so.
And, and my comment is, is it really about how many garage bays? It's about the massiveness of the house and the closeness to A1A. And I'm using that as possibly a way to, to, to reduce the mass of the house because it sticks out there. It's not, and, and it, you know, it's possibly an unnecessary element. Thank you.
Say something on, let's say behalf of the garages. That is the reason motor court was created, to give some privacy. And there is a privacy wall built right there. I don't know if you're able to see it. But for the first garage to start, there is a privacy wall hiding the motor court. So we can also put up a gate getting to the property or to the motor court.
Yeah, that's not getting to, we're not here to redesign, so. I mean, I respect your suggestion. I think it's screened, the motor court is screened, and that's fine. I don't think we want to see any more built. Okay, can I entertain a motion? Or any other comments? Any public comments? There are none. I'm moved to accept the plan as presented. If you guys wanted to have any other comments on, might be agreeable to that.
There is one condition on the table at the moment, that mitigating of the edge along the road. Do you want to address that as part of it?
There's gonna be, there's gonna be some, something to screen the house.
I'll just clarify that landscaping that's presented here does not create any screen that matches the existing, so I just want you to be aware of that. So it's an intent to have some screen.
Maybe you can come up with language to shoot that.
You, you made a motion.
Yeah, I would like to add to that language regarding either the current existing block or, or something new, something compliant.
So the motion is to allow them to either continue with the buffer as is or change into making something similar for the buffer?
Similar or whible.
Thank you.
There's a motion?
I would second that.
One in favor?
Hi.
Dave?
Hey.
So we have a Carla, can you sum up with the vote?
So I received a three to one with member Hutchinson, member Hennington, and Chair Marsh in favor and. I thought only Rick Kerry was in, or?
No.
Okay. But well, Mark, Mark was on. So you have, it's two to two.
So the motion fails. So is there another motion obtained for this project?
Are there some conditions that will be satisfactory? Conditions that would be satisfactory?
I, I just, I'm kind of bothered by the, the architecture, so. Your concern for what we're, what concerns? The five-car garage?
And perhaps to help, you may want to, I don't know if it's in your packet, but look at your criteria for when you review one of these plans. You're looking at the relationship of the building to the site, the relationship of building and site to adjoining areas, the building design. And those are issues, good criteria. So because this is quasi judicial, we are applying this project to those criteria. So if you want to create conditions based on those criteria, that certainly within the board's discretion would do so.
I think, again, I stayed for the design. It's my basis of my negative.
You open it up to public comment one, one more time?
Sure. Mark? Good morning to everybody. My name is Charlotte Flamingo Drive. I assume that because of the pending litigation, the, the construction of the house would not happen at this very moment in person. Since we had discussed in commission and in PMZ, the possibility of a flat roof, and the applicant apparently wants to go down the contemporary route, it might be wise to advise them that since there is no immediate building on that side as it stands, and there might be a change in the, in our codes allowing for flat roofs down the road, that this would be a good opportunity if this does not get approved, in case this does not get approved, to actually redesign the house in a more contemporary way and give them the opportunity to actually scale it even further down, thus alleviating some of the issues of scale versus what it is right now with that hip roof. And, and one more comment, if I may. One of the things I think that we should have here for these meetings is because of our flood claim that has changed now, we should probably have a, a cross from the road, in this case, A1A versus where the house actually begins and see, and see the actual step down with one of those little figures as a six-foot human, just to see the, the scale from the, from the street side. That, I think, would be a huge helpful thing for the audience also to, to just get an idea of the scale. When you look at the, at the renderings, which are, you know, beautiful computer renderings, but you look at the renderings, the rendering is completely flat from the street over to the house, and that is not what is being built. There will be a huge driveway going up to the house level. And that, I think, is one of the issues that we need to. No?
No.
Okay, I'll take that back. But that would be in general, something that I would like to see in the audience. Thank you.
And just a follow-up, if that's something that you all want to incorporate in the checklist, I am more than happy to incorporate it and then bring it back to you for approval before we start using it.
Thanks. Okay, currently we have a can another motion be made to defer?
I think it would certainly be within the board's discretion if you wanted to continue for a month to see perhaps the applicant would consider some design changes, perhaps some direction from the board as to what it would see might be helpful in doing that.
How do we undo that motion, the initial motion?
It's, it's failed.
Okay. What Christie is suggesting, and I agree, is that we can make a deferral motion with some comments as to what may create a successful
I'll make a motion that we ask the applicant to come back for us next month and to take into consideration the comments they heard today and re-present the project.
Do you have a second? Hearing them? Motion dies. Okay. Anybody else want to try a motion? Well, we have to give the applicant some direction.
Make a decision whether to defer it, if it's not deferring, or what, what to do with the application.
All right, let's have a we're not gonna go. Christie, you're gonna have to help here.
You certainly do. Within your ability, have the ability to continue the hearing. Certainly make a decision today. If someone wants to take a stab at making a motion with conditions that would address some of the design concerns of the board, I think that's one option. You know, the continuance motion failed, and I don't know if there's additional conditions that could be placed on the continuance to give it more, perhaps something that may allow this board to come to a decision on the continuance. Certainly, if there's a desire to reject the project outright, that would obviously be another motion as well.
All right, let me try a motion if I can. Can we opt for the applicant's motion that will defer the project to address the comments that the board or the commission has made this morning? Resubmit.
Are you doing continuance to next month or?
And I'll have to ask the applicant if they're willing to do that. Since, let me, since we have an impact here, and partly because we have not five commission members on the board right now voting. We can offer a deferral to, for you to go back and address some of the concerns that the commission had currently and resubmit for next month. And I don't know what's the forecast about members next month?
I believe that only my chair Kerry is going to be out. However, one of the alternates will be able to, from However, one of the alternates will be able to from last week communicated will be able to be in. Which will have.
And I think it's only fair to you because you're not in a. With the legal problems. I know it involves, you know. Time from your consultants, but that would be the fair way to. Try to resolve this. Would you accept that?
Can I accept with the qualification that we get some sort of feedback on?
Well, you've heard the feedback.
From meeting.
No, we're not. We're going to discuss that later. We're not going to meet individually. But you can gather from this discussion what concerns there may be. And you have the opportunity to revise and address them as you see fit or not. And come back to us again.
And also just for the record, we also will post the audio so you'll be able to listen to their comments again. It's. Not like you have to not, you know, gather everything, remember everything they said, post the audio as well, and you'll be able to hear again what some of their concerns was.
Well, very good.
Thanks.
What recap though, what the concerns were?
Yes, because I understand Marx. I think I understand Rex was the garage issue, I think.
Is massing.
Okay.
Was a symptom of the problem of. A massive building close to. Ocean. Avenue. That was my comment. Additional comment is, I think that. That I didn't make at the time, but is that the south elevation, the elevation that faces towards this building is very plain. And I don't think, you know, presents. A very attractive elevation from what will be seen out this way. Slot windows. And. So then I don't want to, I'm not an architect, I'm not going to try to redesign the building, but I. Certainly, we review these on a monthly basis, and this is very unusual from what we see. This is not consistent with the. The mass size or or design of what is typically brought forth.
Not to be labored anymore, but yeah, that was my concern is that the uninterrupted sheer face, especially the south. Find it.
Okay, I think.
Is that side not screened? Right, is that not?
So I think if I can.
Educatively screened, it is right now.
Yeah, but it's not, you can't depend on screening. The architecture has to. You know, maintain its own quality. What I was saying is that, you know, this sheer. Base, if you interrupt it somehow with a feature. That just gives it some more. You know, mastering and scale. Relative to what's there.
If you have any to do that, bring it back in a month.
Okay. So yes, so if you're gonna defer, just make it a date certain. So anybody that's in the public regarding this application knows that it's deferred for a month. And also just remember that you're gonna have to submit in time for your staff to review, just to make sure there's no zoning conflicts or.
What's that deadline?
I mean, we're not going to be too stringent on it, but.
Okay.
Been working with you. Thanks, Carla.
All right, let's try to. Can I have a motion to defer? For date certain. The next meeting, which is when?
It is going to be August 16. August 16.
August 16. To have the applicant re submit to staff and to the commission.
That's your motion. I'll second it.
One in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Okay, catching our breath and moving on to. Actually, item number three. Quasi judicial hearing development plan for two Whitney Way.
Do you want me to read about expert communication?
Please.
At this time, any expert communication should either be disqualified and identify the subject of the communication and the identity of the person or entity within the communication took place. Or any correspondence be provided to the town clerk and made a part of the public record. In addition, each member of the town of the planning and zoning may identify the existence of any investigation or site visits he or she has conducted of any expert opinion received. With both any conflicts of interest on this matter and this is regarding two Whitney Way. If you have no expertise communication, just put say no into the record.
No. No.
No. No.
Okay. We will not proceed with the hearing on this matter. Will anyone wishing to speak on this item, please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
When you come forward, please state your name and address clearly for the record whether or not you have been sworn in, and please keep your breath within the microphone. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Staff. Corey, can you give us a?
Good morning, Chair. Four members, Corey, a Mormon town planner. This is a plan review for two Whitney Way. Scope of work includes construction of a new two story, single family home with five bedrooms, five and a half baths. A three car garage, covered loggia, covered balcony, a third floor terrace and swimming pool. The front meets the town of Ocean Ridge zoning requirements. With conditions that are outlined in the report and two items that staff is requesting the planning and zoning board consider specifically. One is the rooftop terrace, which was commented on in the original set of comments on the plan. The applicant addressed the comments by stating that the code language. Flat roof areas may be increased to 20% if at least 5% is used as a deck porch or usable outdoor space. And that language does not specify if the roof deck is over the first or the second floor. This is correct, and the code's not clear that the neck porch or usable outdoor space is below or above the black roof. However, the town code is clear that homes are limited to the first and second floor spaces. And includes no accommodation for rooftop amenities. There have been some that have been approved in the past, however, and and staff wanted to point that out to you for your consideration on this item. The other item for consideration is the tree fat metal screen structure that's located in the west. West side of the site. The substance of the structure is limited to six feet. However, there are. Elements of the structure above six feet, which would not be consistent with wall and hedge requirements. And this appears to be. By definition, a wall or fence under the town code. Although it's not, certainly not entirely clear in the code, and like that also to be considered by the planning zone. And that concludes our report. If you have any questions, if I can.
Thank you. Any questions? Can you just clarify your earlier statement regarding the roof access? So the missions of where are. Currently, the code does not allow that.
The town of Ocean Ridge code doesn't. Provide or any rooftop amenities at all. The the language that the applicant cited is correct. That the the flat roof portion can exceed 15%. If. Read the language. If at least 5% is used as a deck porch or usable outdoor space. It doesn't specify if that outdoor space can be on the second floor or not, or in this case, the the roof. And once again, the the town code doesn't. Speak to any rooftop amenities. So just wanted to point that out to the board. Conversation recently regarding flat roofs and the the ability to have rooftop amenities, which may be part of your consideration for code amendments. Just wanted to be sure that you're aware of of that in the code currently for your consideration on this item.
So can I clarify? There is a portion of the code that suggests that is not allowable. Is that correct? Yes, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thanks, Corey. Derani? Yes, Derani, guy, building official. Yes, this project has been reviewed for a minimum compliance with the Florida Building Code. And. With respect to this specific proposal, it has met the minimum requirements. Once the. Technical details of the mechanicals for this building is submitted, a further review will be conducted. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, so I reviewed it for the drainage code, and I do have concerns about a runoff going offsite at the. Driveways. Off of Thompson Street, and they're using the proposed swales that were proposed for the actual. Whitney Way as their driveways, which they haven't shown the cross section of how that's actually going to work.
Thank you. Okay, I'll open it for a commission discussion. We all learned.
Good morning. My name is David Reyes. I'm a building contractor. I hope you did this approval. I will be the in charge, person in charge of the obstruction of this nice house. Like it will be. Part of this beautiful community. We're talking about almost two eight o'clock, which is only. Twenty one thousand square feet, more or less, a visible area. The footprint of the house is about 3,000 square feet. So I guess the impact of the overall size of the lot would be very small. Like you mentioned, there's some questions in regards, also concerns in regard to the flat roof. I mean, it's like a gray zone that it could go either way. We're trying to not do a huge. rooftop with, I mean, it is, let's say, just a flat open area. It can be used by the owner to admire the wetlands in front of it. And there's, I don't see any height issues. I guess that the overall height of the building is below the height of the existing houses around the area. And also the way that the house had been located on the lot, they tilted, they angled it. So you're not going to be able to like a big or crush your visual into a big flat wall. You're going to be seeing different angles and different perspective of the house every time you look at it. Also, I would understand the apologies from Mr. Franklin Hoy. He wasn't able to be here. He had a vacation, part of a vacation plan from time ago. So I will put these excuses in questions.
Okay, thank you. Now I will ask. Any of the commission members to. Who have any comments?
I have a question, and I may be misreading your, Derani, at the. calculation table here. On the line towards the bottom that says building height. Twenty eight point five max. And then over two columns, it says 24 plus three feet parapet. So that's a 27 feet, is it? And. So it's, what what is the max building height here? 27 feet? Just, okay.
Yeah, the max is is 27.
27, and and what is the building here?
The building, the building is compliant.
Is compliant, yeah. I wasn't sure whether these were numbers off the building or just are numbers of. Confirming it's compliant.
I think their maximum was 28 and they were 27. That the of the way seven. And I need the up, you have to decrease, and I believe it was 28, and so they're 27.
What were the type?
There's 24, 23.
Right, yes.
So we're still compliant. It's below 27.
That's correct.
Unless someone's on the roof deck and they put patio table and an umbrella up there. In some structure in a barbecue and.
Well, there's no platform barbecue in there. We have plenty of room on the first floor to to do barbecue and all that.
Just a clarification, is this a speculative house or?
Well. The owner will definitely be part of your community in the future. He's in the process of purchasing, I think he already purchased the lot right next to it. So he's on the side if he's gonna be living on this house on the next one that he will be developing. As of now, you can consider us pregnant.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know. I'm kind of concerned about the effect of drainage because downhill, we have. An area that we want to protect. And. I know that the people on Harbor Drive North, just on the other side of Thompson Street. Did experience some problems with runoff. When this whole thing started. And I wonder how that's going to be mitigated. Because we're going to either have runoff going down into the lagoon, or we're going to have runoff possibly going into people's yards, neither of which is desirable.
Well, I'm not a civil engineer, so I cannot give you a technical answer in regards to that. To the best of my knowledge is that whatever is necessary to comply with the requirements of drainage will be addressed and done.
Is any, I I I know that you spoke to that initially. I'm not reading all.
So, so the people on. Harbor Drive. When we first did the offsites, like the, we just did the water main that ran down Thompson. So the paving grading of that is we did Whitney Way, and then right south of Whitney Way is a big retention area. But also on those. I guess it'd be, yeah, so south of this property, there's swales. And those, and there's drainage hooked up to those swales, taking some of that relief off of the properties to the south on Harbor Drive. So they have a swale running along their. Jurisdiction line for the wetland that has, I guess, six inch swell. That can work. I have some concerns about just having retention on site, and that's all they're using. But if they grade it correctly, then I would not see a problem with it with that, having that swell to relieve from the wetlands. I don't think they're quite there yet. But I think they can get there. But like they don't have driveway, they don't have driveway trench drains yet. So all of that driveway parking or driveway area is going into the swell that is was. Proposed for that Whitney Way. So that those are my concerns I expressed earlier.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
I have a question from the app for the applicant. Drawing's A1.1 and A1 specifically the motor court and how it ties in to. Whitney Way and what appears to be the extension of Thompson Street. And this gets in very close. To number 22. And number 18. North Harbor Drive behind them, and I visited the site this this morning. So so I'm I'm confused here. Is the intention to. Extend Thompson Street so that there's two access points to the motor court? Is extension, is the intention to stop Thompson Street at Whitney Way or or stop Thompson Street at the first point? And so what what's the plan for for Thompson Street there?
Well, the the initial one would be the. Rather, the unaccessed to the to the parking space, the one that you see on the left, well, I'm seeing on the left. Yeah, on the left side. That would be like a turnaround point for for me. So we've got two access or.
That's not the way it shows on A1.1, which shows two access points. And it kind of indicates an access point right in there. I mean, so is. But it is, is Thompson Street going to be extended beyond the first drive? Is that, that's my question.
No, not beyond the first drive. The first entry that we have right next to the corner, no. We'll let me say that.
So you'll have two entries, one on
One over Whitney and one over Thompson.
And the other is just
Just a turnaround.
Okay, because it's, it's just not very clear in the drawings. And it really, if you extend Thompson Street beyond that driveway, you really start getting encroaching in those unnecessarily. I know it's a legal right of way, but there's no necessity for bringing Thompson.
Yeah, more completed to the area.
I mean, it could be argued, there's no necessity for bringing Thompson Street beyond Whitney. So it is a concern.
That, that's for the fire trucks, right? They needed us.
Okay.
We were asked to make it longer.
But, but will, will Thompson be paved beyond the
I do not believe that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if it's some gravel and for a fire engine or that, that's good for the people in North Harbor to have access there. But, you know, we, we don't want to unnecessarily this is a few feet off of somebody's swing right there at number 22. Thank, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
This is unrelated to runoff. I'm looking at page J6 and last month, another gentleman who I thought was the builder was discussing the roof treatment. So you have a flat roof look here, but you've got a pitched roof and he was concerned that the downward pitch could receive a substantial amount of water and he did not particularly like that idea. And I know that if my memory is correct, and correct me if I'm wrong, he was going to try to get a hardship or something for a flat roof. Different project, disregard. But, but do you feel confident that this is
This is not the ideal condition. It will require, require more maintenance and care from the owner. But I mean, it's probably with appropriate drainage for, for any rain. So it didn't work.
Do we modify the ordinance? I think we have to be stuck with this.
Okay.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, I confused your gentleman.
The gentleman last month was
Something else.
Neil, have you got any? Where to start, right?
Yeah.
Give it a short.
I'm just I'm very uncomfortable with the stairs on the A 0.3 draw. South of the H view. The flat, the flat area above the garage there. I'm trying, I'm trying to visualize it properly here from this rendering. I'm having a little difficulty. The, the area where, that's a doorway where you come out to that stairs. Is that correct?
Yes, in between the, the bedroom of the second floor, yeah. So we'll be on the side of the, that's it. It's far inside the building. So you will not be able to see it from the, from the street?
No, I understand that part. That's not what I'm, that's not, viewing is not, not my issue. The, 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 the ceiling of the garage, which is the floor that I'm looking at from the other side here on its draw. The, does the parapet continue all the way around the edge of the garage? It
Yeah, we have a part of, I mean, we have the, the slope roof on the inside. We have the apartment well over than the top roof. So the stair, basically the water will be coming down from the stairs.
Not stairs again. Just tell me, the brown, I see the brown wall, which is facing what?
Let me help you here.
Go ahead.
The rendering is incorrect. Okay. It's appearing to be a flat deck over the garage, but it's actually one of those inverted slope.
Okay. And that's work.
Okay, thank you.
It's killing.
Yeah.
I keep going back to the drawings. Like, yeah, it looks like
Looks like another deck.
Yes. Okay. So that is going to get the the pitch, the rose of pitch to meet the requirement. So, so again, if it's getting, it's getting a pitch above the garage, then is it going to be higher than this rendering to have the parapet that's hiding that pitch roof?
Yeah, the entire deal, the part is to cover
It's going to encompass that. So this wall, the, the wall that's shown here is flat, is actually going to be higher than what I'm seeing in this rendering. Is that correct?
You have to go to the
I'm concerned with the safety aspect of someone on those stairs being able to come down onto any semi-flat or pitch or whatever area, a child or something, that then is not prevented from falling off of that garage.
The way it shows now, they do comply, even on the rendering. It's directed, there's a, there's a wall as you come out of that
Correct. And I'm assuming that it's, it's stairway with wired railing. Pardon? This one is blast. Okay.
So they meet the, the barrier of concern, safety barrier. So they comply with
Do, do they meet the requirement? They meet the requirement of not coming off the stairs, but I just, I'm totally uncomfortable with that being barrier that stops someone from falling off the roof. That's it.
It meets the, conforms, help me here, Droni, but it meets the 36 inch requirement as a barrier.
Right. So any elevated platform has to have a minimum rail of 36 inches. And, and so you're not, need, need not be concerned. If it is elevated, it will have a barrier. It's not very clear in the, in the, in the rendering and I do agree. But if, if that stairs is built, we will have a barrier against that stair. And that's, that's something I'm, I'm very keen on making sure we have.
Maybe I can make this easier. I, I don't think we should approve any rooftop living space on the third level. So you don't need a stairway to get to space.
I, I had it on, I had it on video. Thank you for going. Continue, I'm listening.
No, no, no.
I have the same concern that once again, it's going from a deck to more of a living area. That's somewhere that we have been directed to consider what to do. But I understand that this is today before that point. So
We can, we can, I think we can discourage it or deny it.
And Corey said there's enough in the code to say that this is
Right. So I mean, I'm uncomfortable with putting aisle on what was roof now becomes
Okay, I think, yeah, I think we have the ability to deny access to that area. The third strip or rooftop. So
I'll pause now.
No. Are you attorney? Yes, do you feel the same?
Yes, based on Corey's analysis, I agree with his analysis that there's nothing in the code that it's not allowed on a three-story level.
So the rooftop exit, or here it is.
No.
All right. Are you finished, Rick?
I'm, I'm done for now, yes.
And it's clear in the staff conditions, Corey, that about this dense or petition in the back that, that doesn't beat the code, that, that we say to approve it, subject to staff conditions, that, that would be one of those conditions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. No, no, I'm finished.
I'm finished.
Oh, okay. All right. I had a similar concern to Rick on that third driveway or second cut on Thompson. Because it does indicate that it comes up to the street. So I just want I think we're satisfied now that that's a turnaround more than anything else. I don't know where to start to be honest. You know, again, plan works. It's a good plan. You know, you've created a elevation or facade on the front. And then the rest of the house just kind of is there. It's a box. I mean, everything is on the front. And, you know, you may say that it's not visible, but, you know, you can't just design what I see as a, you know, almost a Hollywood front set scene on the front. I mean, it's, there's a lot of things happening and the other three sides are just black. You know, it, it, it's just inconsistent. Thank God we've removed the rooftop terrace because the last thing we want to do is have railings sitting on the rooftop element. You know, I, I, the windows are still a little bit, they're not quite as dead, if you say, with the previous application. I just don't see a consistency of design around the house. It's like a date set on the front and, you know, the materials seem to be fine, but there's absolutely no relief to the rest of the house. Is that intended or?
Well, I'm not a designer. What, what I can see from, from the project is, right, from the, from the design is that the angle, the location of the house inside the lot, in order to avoid that, the lap from the elevation, make it look, among just, among the other houses. So by doing that, you get more movement when you see the house, from, from all different angles. And, and one of the comments initially was that we didn't have enough glass on the elevations. So I mean, I think there's plenty of glass. As a builder, that's one of the first things that we used to cut down because it's a lot of expenses of glass. So
Yeah, I'm just using this as an example. We can set a precedent with something like this because this house is nestled in, you know, property that is okay. But I just, I'm saying this really to the rest of the commission and the public. You know, we can't just have all the ornaments put on one face of the house. And then the other areas are just black walls. I mean, it's, it's just inconsistent with good design, whether it's contemporary or otherwise. You know, this is more forgiving, I admit, but that concern of the precedent that's set to other houses that have more exposure to the public.
Okay. Well, on, on the back side, on the west side of the lot, there's wetlands and
No, I'm saying, I'm saying you have a peculiar or a unique setting here, but I'm just, it's disappointing that, you know, some of the materials that you say, because you have Whitney Avenue as one exposure and part of Thompson. And, you know, if you look at the Whitney Avenue one, it's like
Well, I, I think definitely that the architect can go ahead and include some of elements of the other elevation, of the front and the side elevation into the rear, the backside.
And my, my only concern again is the fact that you have floor to see, floor to floor heights of 14 feet. Okay. And it's an exaggerated, not, there's no, just think if a neighbor was adjacent to this, 20 feet or 30 feet.
Yeah, but we still, overall, we still below the house's next door. So so when we move outside, it's going to be above us.
Whoever's designing this should be conscious that, and I said, from the town standpoint, in this, this commission, we don't want to set a precedent that it was okay here and why can't we do it somewhere else?
I, I, I think it's very difficult and I, you're put in a difficult position. The designer should be here. To
What we mean was a location also.
Yeah, well, no, I need to ask to come
What we need is to get this approved so I can go on vacation also.
Because how can we address design issues without the designer standing there? And I'm with Mark. This is, it's very, this, this house is kind of tucked away. It's down a little bit in elevation from the street. It'd be real easy to say, oh, it doesn't matter here because nobody's going to see it. But the next one comes along, maybe on the lot next to Mark's house or next to Neil's house. And, and that applicant's going to say, well, you allowed it over on two Whitney Way. You know, why, why do I have to worry about my side elevations and how, how they viewed from the neighbor's lot? So I, I think we have to, have to review these consistently. And, and hold the same criteria up to, to this property as you would the, the one that was, you know, 25 feet from their, from their neighbor's house. And that, that's my view on it. And I think they could do a lot more on the other elevations. I agree with Mark.
I mean, contemporary doesn't mean you have to have a sheer wall. Just one, one plank. You can have some kind of detail.
It's not like we're reinventing the wheel. All this type of design was done in the early 1900s with the, the flakor ride and the I'm not comparing this, but, but I mean, it's, it used to use flat roof and parapets and all that. Yeah, it goes and go, the same comes.
I'm just trying to alert the rest of the commission here that may not be seeing it as clearly as I am.
I think, can I ask?
Sure.
Yeah. If we were to approve this as it looks, does someone building another house get a free ride? Or can we say, well, this is, this is in the public eye? You've got to have more interest getting away from this slaviness of this. I mean, to my thinking, no, not too many people will see this, except we're seeing it more than most people will ever see.
I'm not disagreeing.
In the future, in other locations that are highly visible, and somebody said, well, we look, look at what you did on Whitney. And does that create an issue?
Well, I think from a legal perspective, the more consistent the board can be, the better. So if you were to approve this today, you're absolutely right that if someone wanted to put it on a lot that's much more visible, this board may have a hard time saying no because you approved it in another spot. Now, that doesn't mean that the board can't take into consideration, you know, where the lot is located and things like that. But to the more that this board can be consistent with its review, especially of architectural features, it sends a clearer message to each developer of this is what this board is looking for, whether you're in a secluded lot or in more, much more visible area.
Yeah, well said. So again, it may be possible, as Chris just said, to make sure that this is site-specific on any motion. And you know, can't be used as an argument down the road. The precedent is what I'm
Worried about because, you know, you get an applicant that's difficult, wants to take something to appeal. And they use precedent as their argument. I, I, I like to make approvals when people come in and with conditions. But sometimes they come in that are beyond conditions and changes that, that I know have a phrase in a, in a motion. And I'm feeling, you know, when we're talking about addressing the other elevations other than the front elevation, and how, how do you put that in a motion? Mark, do you think we can adequately do it or?
Yeah, I think you just, it's a simple thing of being more consistent, that you have, you know, design and foresight, the ability. And that, you know, that some of the design elements are consistent on all bases, all sides. I mean, it's, it's, it's pretty, and I do this and I do this, you got to be loose. You know, it's up to the designer or who is reviewing it.
My preference would be a project with conditions rather than make somebody come back. It's easier on them, it's easier on us, it's easier on staff.
No, I mean, we're here to, we're not, we don't want to, but I just, my caution is about the precedent.
Could we create a list of conditions and then somebody could offer a motion?
And just to keep in mind, if you, Mike and I asked up to the, for them to have that decking at the top, they might choose to redesign completely and still have to come back anyway.
Possibly, but I think that's possibly as simple as eliminating a door and a stairway. And, and enclosing a parapet rather than a railing around the back. That doesn't look hard to me, you're.
Yeah, construction wise would be better for me, so. Then, but, but it would be after the owner and then the designer for, for make a final decision on this.
I, I find that too easy a way to address that issue, doing it conditionally. Once again, I don't want to set a precedent on nickel and dime conditional things that are against where we want to cover the debate. So.
Are you specifically with the rooftop?
Yes.
I think we can make a.
Yeah, that one, I think.
We've got a whole.
I can't vote for a conditional person.
No, I think we, I'm hoping that we're not going to.
So.
Rooftop. So access. Okay.
And, and I think subjectively, you have problems with the other three sides and my subjective problem is with the front, so.
I mean, I, I'm just.
Although they threw everything at the front and then.
Yes, we've got the rest of the house.
It's, it's overdone. I think the garage is too high, you know, again. And make a worse old record here. All right, let's try it. Rick, you're the smartest one up there, I think.
No, but you're the designer.
Public comment?
Public comments. Come on, Martin. Take a shot at me, come on. Okay, hearing no public comments. We want to try to make a motion.
Try. And chime in at any point. That be approved the project subject to all conditions listed in the staff reports. And that includes the elimination of the rooftop deck and access to the rooftop. As, and additional condition is revise side elevations to show more elements consistent with the front elevation. Any additions on that?
Well, give them the option if they want to use the the site specific. No, so that's my voice.
That's the motion. Anyone can choose to act to it.
Can we leave staff with that obligation to review them?
Well, just keep in mind that staff pretty much look at code. So in regards to, so if something's in that design that they're just going to maybe, because it's the home, they're going to be looking at whether it needs code or not, not so much of how, you know, the artist is going to look throughout the house.
Again, I suggest that we.
Think it needs to come back.
Without the rooftop access. And addressing some of the architectural detail.
This world entire.
Around, especially on Whitney Way. Some of the, where it's publicly viewed from, there is consistent, not just this Hollywood front, no.
Yeah, and I think it's, I think we always have to be conscious of the view from the neighbors, even if it's from a neighbor's backyard. When we get these large two-story houses with big flat facades, they're going to have an impact and.
Actually.
So, Rick, can you change your motion then to?
It looks like the motion died.
Well, yeah, so make another one for withdrawal. And please state the August 16th, so that we state certain. Say the date, so that we state certain, so say August 16.
August 16. Then I make a motion to defer this to August 16 for, to give the applicant an address, opportunity to address both staff comments and the comments they've heard today.
Okay. Second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Again, just the check on the blue house, they're decent, I've been looking down at this. Is that your friend?
Everybody's my friend.
Okay, let's try and get along here and move on to item four, quasi judicial hearing development plan review for 69 Spanish River Drive.
At this time, any expert taking me to the book and then the party of the communication and then the press group or agency with the communication to place or any correspondence be provided to the town court, they may have heard of the record. In addition, each member of the town is only made in spite of assistance of any investigation or site visits here to be selected or any expert can receive and disclose any comments of interest on this matter.
No.
No.
None.
Well, we proceed with this. We will proceed with the hearing on this matter. Will anyone which has a speak on this item please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear affirming to the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
When you come forward, please state your name and add it clearly to the record whether or not you're in this room and please speak directly into the microphone. So you need to be sworn in as well. Do you want to swear, Carl Ryan, she's speaking on this? Raise your hand. Do you swear affirming that testimony about this hearing, that on session is the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
So, I'm sure.
Okay, staff, Corey, can you? Good morning, chair. For members, Corey O'Mormont, Town Planner, as the plan review for 69 Spanish River Drive. The scope for work includes demolition of existing single-family home and the construction of a new two-story, single-family home with five bedrooms, five and a half baths, three-car garage, swimming pool, spa, and covered lanai. The project complies with the zoning requirements of the town of Ocean Ridge. And this report recommends approval with the condition of a note change on sheet LP1 of landscape plans for present January. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions, Ryan?
You're any guy building official. This project has been reviewed for minimum compliance to the Florida Building Code. When technical drawings are furnished or building approval, further review will be done. I must point out that this project is also able to receive a discount upon, for permit fees because of their use of trying to preserve a few trees on the site. It is a process that we had recently put in place for the towns' will to preserve existing landscape.
Thank you. Thank you. Eric?
Yeah, I reviewed the, for the town of Ocean Ridge Drainage Codes, which meets the code with comments that will be addressed during building permit. And I did have comments on the landscape in the right of way that I was going to address.
Yeah, so when we get to the landscaping section, there is some comments regarding some of the issues with composite multi-landscaping in the right of way. And I did provide to all of you a field report that I put in front of your desk for each one of you to see. So once we get to landscaping, of course, we'll discuss more of what the stuff issues are.
Okay, applicants?
Good morning. My name is Richard Bremer. I'm with RWB Laneros Architecture, 1600 South Dixie Highway, Suite 400 in Boca Raton. Good morning. Oh, I've been swearing. Good morning. I'm here today to review and discuss the new proposed single-family residence located at 69 Spanish River Drive. Let me go to the survey just real quick, please. Okay, that's good. The new home is replacing an existing ranch-style home approximately 2622 AC and 3736 total under roof. The existing finished floor elevation of the existing home is at 7.75 NAVD. The new home will be a new two-story coastal transitional style with five bedrooms, six and a half bath, with three-car garage, pool, and pool deck with nicely appointed hardscape and landscape. We go to the site plan. The architectural site. That's, that's. The new proposed home sits on a 16,144 square foot corner lot with the rear having an east, eastern exposure to the water views. The house sits within the required setbacks of 15 feet to the sides, 25 feet to the front and the rear. And the finished floor elevation will be at 10 NAVD, which meets the FEMA flood zone height requirement. The garage will be at six feet NAVD. The existing edge of pavement is approximately 3.8 feet NAVD with a, with a new driveway slope of 5.6%. The pool deck in the rear, the pool deck will be approximately 9.5 NAVD with steps down to the yard, which is approximately 7.75. An additional steps down to the dock, which is at 5.5 feet NAVD. The top of the retaining wall is at seven and a half NAVD. It'll be retaining wall along the back and sides to accommodate the, the change in elevation. The coastal transitional elevation, if we can go to the rendering. Coastal transitional style elevation is consistent with the architectural coastal styles located in the neighborhood, but bringing a new fresh clean coastal character to the existing residential structures. It enhances the existing surrounding structures with its familiar massing, neutral colors, and simple material and penetration details. The height and scale is sensitive to the new FEMA height requirements, trying to create more of a human-scale approach and feel from the street to be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. There will be a circular paved driveway entry with a paved walk with steps to the raised porch entry feature. The front of the house, the master, bath, and garage will be one-story with a simple massing in detail. The raised entry porch and balcony creates a nice sense of scale and sense of entry. The roof tile will be a burrell charcoal gray. There will be penetration details of soffit moldings, brackets, shutters, and head and sill details at windows and door openings. The rear of the house will have a have a open, and, sorry, the rear of the house will have an open field with covered lanai and covered balcony areas facing the waters to the east and to the south over the bridge. There will also be penetration details at the rear and the sides to continue the feeling and style of the architecture. Overall, the new proposed home, hardscape and nicely appointed landscape enhances the surrounding architectural treats, streetscape and neighborhood. The home and style should be a welcoming addition to the Ocean Ridge streetscape. Please allow me to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from the public, Chris?
If you want to pick at this point, yes, you can, or later.
Yeah, Martin?
One quick question. The side elevation, the side step back, is that 15 or 20? It should be 20 towards the street, it should be 20. I think you need to.
Is it a corner lot, right?
A corner lot, yeah. It might be 20. It's 22.4.
Yeah, it's shown.
It's shown, it's 20.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed.
Circle. The side interior.
Yeah. It is 20.
You were going through the NAVD elevations.
Yes.
And you said in the rear stepping down. And I wasn't sure it said to the to the dock at 5.5, is that the existing?
No, actually, it's, it's being raised.
Pardon?
It's, it's being raised.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, because I was hopeful because the third dock goes underwater.
Exactly.
Hopefully we weren't going underwater 5.5. Got to put my house up for a sec.
Yeah, it's like three.
I had, I had one question. I was looking at the three-car garage.
Yes.
And I noticed the one on the left side of the house is setback and it shows 17 feet and nine inches to the wall. And also intruding into that space is water heater and something else. The other two garages are longer, and I just wondered why the setback. Was it so that you would fit inside the bar of 36? Because that probably would work.
It's, well, no, it would. But what I was trying to do is kind of create a difference in the massing. You know, a lot of times you'll see garages all the way across. I just wanted to try to create character in the roof line into the front of the house.
Do we have a requirement for depth in the garage running?
Well, in regards to the garage and the, the approximate space that we need, the two-car garage more than one needs the requirement. It's an extra.
Actually. Okay. Anybody else?
I mean, I have a positive, very strong positive comment to make up here. The way you took the steps going up to the front door and added another landing to project them out and to soften the slope feature. I like the way you brought the planters out around the front door. And I hope for sure that you are going to keep the two rows of hedges, especially with the front one being slightly higher than the one in front of the planter. Because that would mitigate the sloping of the lot also. I think we need to see more of that sort of insight into how to, how to deal with. This is elegant. Some of the things we see are very simplistic.
That's Louis' line there.
So, thank you.
You're elevating your building, that's good.
Yes.
That's a pun.
I like it too. I think it really looks neat.
Yes. Rick, you have any?
No, I think, I mean, this is going to be a large house on the lot. It's going to be very visible. I think you've done a nice job trying to address that. Especially on the south elevation where you've created different gable lines there and inset. Because that's the first thing when you.
Absolutely.
I live on Nlikay. It's the first area you see.
Right when you.
I look at the back of this house every time I come across the bridge.
Yeah, that's exactly why.
And so it's going to have an impact and you know, you've done, you know, within the code, what, what could be done. You know, the three-car garage across the front, not close, is not ideal, but you did it on a one-story section. You create a, a change on the gable line and I think that's all we can ask for. You know. So I appreciate it. Appreciate the good efforts. It addresses a lot of the things that we previously discussed about side elevations not being ignored and. Thank you.
Okay, I share the same positions that are in this commission. I think it's a well-done project. I don't think we needed landscape. I don't think we needed landscape presentation. I think this is well-done, and I think we need to just talk about the effect or the impact on the street.
So, there's, you know, in regards to staff, with Public Works and meeting as well as engineering, there's two, I wouldn't say issues, but two things we want to continue to ask staff to work with the applicants on landscaping. One of the things is in regards to, and you have an image of this in your field report provided to you, they have two trees in the right-of-way, which they have wires going through. And of course, this creates an issue for staff, and even shaping up the tree wouldn't remedy to have the wires completely out of the tree, which is one of the, one of the issues that we have. I mean, I know they have proposed to have to keep those, which is, you know, after the town, we do want to promote, but if we keep those, it's just a different situation, because there's wires running through this tree specifically. And that's why we're having issues in regards to this. The second, and I'm gonna probably play it a lot there, all at once, is as you're coming over the bridge, of course, it's the first home you see, and I know they're gonna remove some of the trees already on that side and keep some others, which we're okay with as staff. However, I do believe that because it's such a, it's an entrance into that island, we do want to make sure to continue to work with them, because we want to make sure it's beautified. So maybe we're gonna, you know, recommend maybe some flower beds that they put along the side or something. But again, we just ask staff, we want that leniency to continue to work with the landscape architect mostly in regards to those two areas that are critical to the town.
Can I ask, thank you. These trees that are affected by the power lines, can they be relocated to that front hall?
Let me comment on this. Honestly, the one that's in the median is actually not in the right-of-way. It's just, it's within our property. It's a beautiful golden trumpet tree with nice character. By no means is either one of them an invasive tree, and that's why we chose to leave them in place, because anytime you relocate something, there's always a possibility of losing it. And you drive by, the one in the center is absolutely beautiful with the character and everything. And, and I think by trimming it properly with the right arborist, it would add to the elevation, which is not, it's not being shown right now. Now, the other one to the left is a mimosa. And it used to exist in South Florida in the 80s before we had the call, very interesting tree. Not a fast grower, not invasive by any means, has been used as a hedge. So, that's a tree that could be trimmed very easily. And I'm sure the owner would not have a problem going into an agreement with the town in doing that with that. But that tree also serves in its location, there is a utility pole in that area. It serves to kind of hide it from public view, basically. That's dead. We did take into consideration a lot of the existing date palms that were there. Two canary date palms, we relocated those in the front. We don't know if they're gonna make it be relocated, but they're in the rear, so we have no choice. But it's worth the time. And the other one is Sylvester's, which is in the front. The plan that we're showing here does indicate areas from the bridge over that we are proposing embellishment. And not so much with annuals that we would have to replace, but, you know, dwarf fire bush, you know, that would give us some color or whatever, and additional screening to the clusia hedge that's behind them and on top of the tufu wall or whatever, that's retaining wall back there. We're trying to maintain, there's three arica palms back there, and there's a green buttonwood that might look kind of straggly right now, but in my opinion, I think if we do the right trimming and canopy control, we can have a nice tree there that would hide the majority of that building as you come over the bridge. So, I think the owner and myself would recommend that we are allowed to work with staff on embellishing it. At least that point right there.
About those trees? Is it the type of tree that can be trimmed repeatedly?
Absolutely.
In the future?
Absolutely. You know, if it was an oak or a ficus or something that if you trimmed, you'd kill it, you know, like a palm. If it was a date palm, it could only go up. It can't be trimmed to a certain point. But these trees can be maintained and, you know, kept. I just recommend drive by and take a look at it. I think the golden trumpet tree especially, it's in the cul-de-sac, is well worth preserving.
Can I ask, is there any liability to homeowner to, are we, what's the issue with the power line, carriages and all that?
Well, it's against the code to be in the lines to be get by.
Right tree, right place, okay? The fact that they're existing, though, they're not, they're not to the point where the lines are running through them, okay? So.
Yeah, we have the images of it is. They're in the tree, and they're not in the rear, they're in the rear.
Yeah, it appears that they're true. I mean, somebody pruning it, maybe.
We can.
It'll be the fact, like, you see those trees where they and you have little things.
Well, that's, that's not what we're proposing right now. That's what a slum does when they, when they nelson's a market. We're proposing to go in and, you know, reduce the crown of the tree and then maintain the crown of the tree underneath the power lines.
I just.
Sure.
With regard, regards to power lines, only FPL is able to cut within 10 feet of a power line and vegetation. So, are you suggesting that the homeowner will do it or have ourers do it? They're not allowed to. So that thing that FPL does, we have no control over that. The only way I see we could keep these trees, if somehow you guys could work with FPL and the utilities to move those lines or go underground. Otherwise, it is a hazard to the entire community. In the event of a storm, we don't know what will happen.
Yes, and based on other works, it's, you know, it has been a continuous issue with this one. Even trimming it, you know, there was a homeowner that tried to trim it as much as they could, but it always becomes an issue very often.
There's a hazard, there's a reason why only FPL can do it, because of the exposure to hazard. Chief, you have a question?
Just want to remind everybody that you're talking about power lines. Our ordinance covers utility lines. Everything that's hanging from that pole is part of that process. So you have generally the FPL is the highest, AT&T or Comcast, and then AT&T or Comcast. So, in our experience with that property, that property continuously comes into violation every year and has to be re-trained, and they're being it out, which is a way to meet the absolute word of the code, but not the intent of the code. So, I would ask that you look at that, because that does affect almost every resident on this whole.
Okay, thank you. All right, I think, yeah, that, as Mr. Guy just said, you know, there are some and you obviously said, FPL are the only licensed.
Well, we can remove the golden trumpet tree and replace it with right tree, right place, like a liggustrum or a creek myrtle or something like that. That's permissible by FPL to grow underneath power lines. It's part of the list of trees.
Okay, well.
Or we could just leave it open like that.
I don't know. Christie, help me. What exposure do we have?
It's not gonna be allowed in the right of way.
No, no, but we got plenty of room to plant, you know, within our property.
I asked earlier, can it be transmitted to somewhere else in the property?
Maybe. I'll have to look at it.
But if you give, like, staff in regards to this, if you say, hey, we want to have one shade tree at least in the front, we can work with the applicant and just work on where the location would be for this tree, and also if you want to make a contingent on any staff condition and staff working regarding the just as long as you give us direction that you at least want one shade tree, then we'll make sure that there's a minimum of one shade tree in the front, and we'll just work on the location of it.
Well, the shade tree in the front, your definition of shade tree would be something like an oak, correct?
I think they have a it's not just an oak, but.
Well, they got different trees, but the setback for right tree, right place for FPL, because they would have to, I think, is it's 30 feet. So anything 30 feet in the front is not going to work, or shade tree. So either we go, because the power lines are there, either we go with the smaller trees that are permissible, like silver buttonwoods, liggustrums, you know, small-leaf clusia, et cetera. You have to look at the list and make a selection. Those are permissible to even plant them right underneath the power lines, which wouldn't be the case, because we would be in the right-of-way then, which we're not allowed, so you know, we can do a solution. I just, I was just trying to.
I mean, the idea of thing, I was hoping I didn't have to say shade tree again.
No.
Well, is if you could relocate it inboard to your property, I mean, as Commissioner Hennigan mentioned, you have a nice plaza-type entry. If you could put a tree there, it's facing US, so you'd need to get shade, not just for the neighborhood.
I'll have to talk to Myra Boris to see what his opinion is. The tabiduria, golden trumpet tree is sensitive to that. And to kind of spend that kind of money, I'd rather replace it with a tree else.
That mean or equivalent.
Yeah, I know it's gonna grow to screen additional, especially on the roadside, on the inlet K drive. And use something that's not as, you know, open as a tabiduria, but something more dense. That wouldn't mind doing.
It's over and over. We are trying to promote shade. So, if it's inboard off the right-of-way, it's fine. I mean, as long as there's
You're fighting to save a tree, we appreciate it.
I understand that, and, you know, and that's fine, but since we have these conflicts right now, I mean, I'm also trying to find a solution for it. And, you know, to put a shade tree in the front, we're on the north side, basically, that's your drain field. We can't put any shade tree there. In the center, it's basically driveway. And then we have the overhead power lines, which FPL requires if you plant anything new to be 25, 30 feet away from the power lines. That kind of limits using a shade tree in the front property. I don't want to say yes and not be able to provide in the long run, for short run.
The circular driveway isn't an absolute requirement. It's a, it's a nice to have.
Yeah, most homes do.
Not, not consistent.
It connects with the front entry.
We had so many with drain field issues and others. It used to be the common, and now it's the exception.
It's a shame.
Yeah, it's really disappearing, and so it, I mean, this house is closer to the street than the prior house, and maybe one of those elements that has to be sacrificed in order to have the right landscaping in place. And you're you gotta, you gotta look at it holistically.
To take the driveway and you
We're out to protect trees, not driveways.
No, no, I'm not protecting the driveway. I'm just saying that's one element there. But again, that the setback of the garage is what, 25 feet? 25 feet. So, if FPL requires us to put, for me to put a shade tree there, it would be so close to the house that an oak or large shade tree would be growing into the house, ruining any kind of openness and view to the, I think, nice architecture.
Look at that northwest corner there, just to the, to the north of the of the entry. There seems to be room.
Well, we have one of the large, one of the large date palms that are going there. Northwest.
Northwest.
And we have another one down
Come down.
On the southwest part, just kind of flanking it, so.
Between the drain field and the house. Right there. Whoop. Go back to the right. That's a driveway. Go to the house.
Where the inlet is, between the inlet and drain.
Right there, we have the mouse. We have a seagull tree right there.
Let's stay with the drain. Just to the southeast of the drain. Don't come straight down. Whoa, come down. Right there, move up. You could put the tree right there.
No shade tree.
Why?
The canopy is gonna grow to at least 25, if not 40 foot wide. I mean, I've got oaks at my house, and I have to have them uplifted, and they're, and they're 20 feet away from the house, and they're still growing over my roof. I'm just telling you.
Yeah, I appreciate your
I don't want the owner to tell me
But can you
Why the heck did you plant a tree?
Why couldn't that, I mean, a tabiduria could grow there quite easy.
Are you gonna relocate the tabiduria there?
Right.
Okay.
It could be. I mean, at least the neighborhood has to have some.
But they don't have to. It'd be conflict.
We need your answer.
They're there.
I thought we just make a motion that reflects his concern, our concern, and and we're, we're I think we we aired enough comments that staff knows where they are and where we would like them to go.
That's it? Well, in retrospect, though, if I relocate or remove that tabiduria, I am going to replace it with something else, okay? It's appropriate to be that close to the line. And that's, and that's not, that's what I'm gonna do, but I'm just saying.
Replace it with two or three.
I understand the motion.
Well, what project now? Okay. I would make a motion, we approve the project, referencing the issue with the trees with the power lines and potential equivalent solutions reflecting the consensus of, I think, the other members here, that you give us as much shade as you can.
And also the landscaping as they're coming over the bridge.
Okay, and, and, yes, so do we?
We'll staff will work with you on that.
Yeah, that's, that's either that staff, if you wouldn't mind.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good job.
Second?
I find second. Maybe we both did the time. Okay. I have a suggestion. The next item be third. Because isn't this really gonna be covered, not completely, until the October workshop?
That's up to you.
I think I'd like to just have a poll, if I could, of the commission. That we are in agreement with no third floor objection.
Absolutely.
It's no third-floor roof access. Single line to me, yes. I mean, I would like to go beyond that.
That's, why don't you give that to staff and then?
I mean, I would love to make a comment that we don't want a third floor.
Which we're not allowed to.
We're building two-story houses, not three-story houses with no roof on the third floor. That's the point out.
Yeah, well, we just, I think. All right. Rick, back.
So, I'd like to add a comment. The last meeting we had, there was a discussion about if we allowed separate, example, AC units on the roof, whether or not we needed to have access to those. I had to check, there was a change to the Florida Building Code in January of this year. And they removed some things and moved some things around. For example, just so their pools and all the electrical requirements have been removed from the residential code and on the first back to the other volumes that we have. Mechanical has not been changed. So, there is a mechanical residential code in the residential. And in that portion, there is no mention of supplying stair access to roof equipment. So roof equipment can be on a roof without stair access.
It, it, it's not a hardship to have access. I, I have a flat roof commercial building with air conditioning. Every time I have to change that air conditioning, it costs two hundred dollars to bring a lift in. It's nothing. And they access everything else with ladders. And if you do, if you start putting internal stairways, external stairways, it'll find it, it, it'll find uses that we hadn't intended.
Right. There is a sixteen-foot requirement for, uh, commercial properties. If there was ever a multifamily residents that had equipment on the roof, then.
I don't want to miss. Just comments, please.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, I have.
Want me to go first?
Sure.
Okay. It's hard for me to separate the issue I wanna bring up from it being personal because it's the property next to my house. So every time, or this property has gone through thousand changes in the last two years. Ninety Island Drive. Was Frank Lloyd. Would you need it? Okay. Uh, Daronia and I have had discussions about issues there with it being per, particular items being permitted or not. At this point, I just came back from being gone a month. And now there's an entire eight-block-high patio or something going into the back. In other words, I don't know where it started. I don't know where it's ending. It has never come in front of this committee and it's being above or below the fifty percent rule. From what I know that's gone on there, I cannot comprehend that it doesn't add up to over fifty percent. And to me, it's like death by a thousand cuts. They relancet, they put a different roof on, they have gutted the inside of the house, they put new electrical in, they changed the dock, and now this is going on at the back. If nothing else, as a committee member, not as a neighbor, I would like to see a summary of what the hell's happened. I, I don't think they get to set the precedent that you can break every rule, do everything incrementally, one at a time, never occupy the home. Initially, they've never initially occupied the home, never mind moved out and come back. And you get to not have a judicial review. All they're getting is administrative action.
Mr. Chair, I could answer. Uh, so I, I will provide, um, SI determination with respect to work that was done inside the building. If I'm not able to observe, it is possible somebody could have done that. And if it is not observed or not reported and have no documentation of it, we cannot act on it. Having said that, the work that has been permitted to date uh, that is physically connected to the house, the windows, the roof, and stucco on the exterior has actually, uh, been below the SI determination. We as staff have had some very colorful interactions with this group. We have actually deterred them from making a huge storefront improvement that they wanted to change the front door to look like the city furniture building, uh, which was their objective. And, um, that would have, based on the numbers we had, brought them over to, uh, substantial improvement and in front of this board. So I'll say they're very wise about construction and what the town codes are and have been able to fly right below the radar. But I will provide the documentation that we have on this project.
I agree with you.
Good comment.
Anything else? I just wanna thank members especially Rick for coming back for this meeting that we just had, cuz I think it was hugely important to have, you know, presence. What are we looking like next month? And, and sorry, Neil, you too, you flew in.
Actually, I actually drove in.
Oh, I drove it. Well, thank you.
Pretended it was ninety-five twice, where I they evacuated the road, so I had an eighteen-hour drive.
That will appreciate.
It was exciting. Did you get caught in any of that?
Yesterday?
Saturday.
Guy came in last night.
No, I do appreciate that cuz these are very important
Absolutely.
elements or reviews that we're having. Who's around next month? Do we have a?
I won't be here.
Go over here.
Who wants to be the liaison with the town commission? For next, if you would advise me what happened at this meeting?
I will be out the weekend.
That's the date.
Can you do that again?
Sure.
Oh.
It's pretty soon.
No, I, I understood.
She does a very good job.
I, yeah, Charlotte does a great job. Puts words in our mouth.
Gotta watch your day.
Two other things. One is the ex parte discussion. We want to discourage, not, not allow applicants to contact us individually. I know most towns allow it, but I think it gets into a very uneasy. You can put members of the commission into.
I mean, yes, I, like, and, you know, with the applicant, like I discouraged it, but if they ask for your person, like, you know, your emails and so forth, that's public record. I can't necessarily stop it from happening. So that's why I also rely on you all to understand your rights and be able to, if you do not want to. Because of course you have to be very careful about what you say and what you do when you, if you decide to me um, to tell the applicant no, because I can only do to certain extent. I cannot deny access to you all's, you know, email. It's public record.
Right. Well, you sent me an email asking if I want, or excuse me, advising me that they would like to, I specifically sent you in, in the public record a response saying, no. I would like to leave that on file that until I retract that.
Okay. And I can also use this meeting to advise.
So you can tell them that.
Yeah, I can also use this meeting to advise that they have stated, no, but again, if they ask me for your information, you just don't have to respond.
I understand that. But you can make the statement on my behalf that he doesn't want to.
Same here.
I, I, I gave you the same response. I agree, but, you know, we're, our email addresses are on the website, so somebody does have to ask.
I'm just, I'm asking the commission to refrain from any response.
So I would be happy in the future to again, not even ask, just let me say no to the applicants if they want to before the meeting and just, you know, again, they can also present their project here. But, you know, so if it comes through, you guys don't even have to respond. And that's one way of.
It, it's safest for us to speak to applicants in the presence of our attorney. And as soon as we start having discussions outside of that, it, and there becomes disputes, uh, you know, it just complicates those disputes.
We're not discussing flat roofs today, okay?
Sorry?
We're not discussing flat roofs.
Yeah, we defer that or postpone it.
Postpone it. So what, you wanna bring it up again next month, or do you wanna wait till the joint workshop?
I'd like to bring it up next month.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to, that it look like we're pushing it off and ignoring it. That's not, I, I, that's not what happened. Part of it actually came up today.
This is a good example.
If we had time, we should be discussing it today, but I don't think, ten, twenty, we should start a discussion of it.
Yeah, just a quick question. Are you all okay with the memo and just bringing it back this month, or would you like for us to work on some type of ordinance? Maybe with some suggestions of what you guys spoke at the last meeting, just to throw it out there.
I don't think we're the one where we're drafting anything.
Yeah, I wanna thank, thank Cory, you did provide us with.
Thanks for the input, but.
The, the next step, I don't think I'm really jumping even the baby pool.
The last thing I have is housekeeping. Some of you know I walk around early in the morning. And with Thompson being sightfully reviewed, there, somebody's hedge is three-quarters of the way across the sidewalk.
Yeah, it was recorded already and it's.
And not only that, but coming out of Thompson, when the listen side, it was very hard. So I don't know who you can.
It's in the hands of home person.
Okay. Is that, that's a private issue, not a town right of way issue?
That's a code enforcement issue.
No, no, I mean.
It's the property owner's responsibility to maintain that area and take down, and we utilize code enforcement to enforce it.
That's the jury, a motion to the jury.
I'll make it.
Second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye. Thank you all.